Good evening and welcome to tonight's City Council, Yukon City Council Youth and Municipal Authority Board Session. It's December seventh, two thousand twenty-one, this is at six thirty. Sorry, I'm having trouble reading when I'm talking to that. We're in the council chambers in the Centennial Building.
Thank you. Twelve South Fifth Street, Yukon, Oklahoma. We're going to start tonight with the discussion of our Jackie Cooper Gym repairs. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last big rain we had, I don't really remember the date, but the last rain we had, we found out that we have some major problems at the Jackie Cooper Gym. Water was seeping into the walls and coming through and we found out that whether it had been done before, we don't know, but the building was never sealed. It is block, cement blocks, and it is in badly need of repair. I'm going to let Mitchell Horton show you some pictures and, and talk about it.
Okay. We do have some recommendations on fixing the walls. There's several things we need to talk about. We did talk about this, some other issues a little while ago, six, eight months ago or so. This is just a follow-up that we are working on and we want to talk to you about. You know, we're talking about the Jackie Cooper Gym and as you can see, looking at the front, looking at the front of the building, it's got what we call effluorescence, which is salt in the block that's leaching out. But one of the other problems we're having is the building has some of the grout that needs to be cleaned out and re-tuck pointed. We have had it looked at and we have an estimate we'll talk to you about as we go through. But as you know, and you can see, it was built in nineteen ninety-nine, so we're dealing with a building that's twenty, almost twenty-two years old. So we have some ideas that we say we're going to talk to you about. But all the way around the building, we need to clean out the grout and what's recommended and re-tuck point it, which takes a mason. And then what we're talking about doing is using a block filler to seal the block and the joints, and then we're going to use a paint on it to seal that wall. Because the wall is porous, it doesn't have any water repellent in that type block, and it's passing through the walls, as you can see. What the estimate takes in consideration, any of the downspouts would be removed. Any of the signage would be removed so we can get a good seal on that building to keep any of that moisture from migrating into the inside of the wall. So as you can see, we got downspouts all the way around the building. Like I said, we're talking about doing all the way around it. There is a good picture. You can kind of see the effluorescence. With that, you can see that somebody's tried to do some joint repair at the top. Well, it won't show on the screen, but the white spots, somebody's tried to do some joint repair to seal the wall. But what we're talking about is reseal the joints, you know, you know, rake out the bad stuff and put in good stuff, seal it. We have an estimate on the outside walls. It's, it's going to take about a hundred and eighty-one thousand is what the estimate is to fix the outside walls alone. It's going to take a general contractor, and the reason it's going to take a general contractor is you're going to have to deal with a mason first that's going to have to clean the walls and get it prepped, and then you're going to have to have a painter come in to apply the block sealer and paint the building. So it's kind of a three-stage deal, and the bonding that we need and the capacity we need for a hundred and eighty-one thousand is why it's going to cost that much. What we're asking is if you would allow us to go out and actually go out for bids to see if we're in the right money to do the repairs, at least seal the walls to keep the water from migrating into the building and causing more damage that's being caused. The other problem that we talked about and we had issues with, the roof, the way that the gutter was put in, as you can see along the parapet there. Let me see, let me see. There's a gutter along the north wall to the left. It's an integral gutter that's designed into the building. We were having problems with that, and that's caused some damage inside the building. The Public Works Director, Arnold Adams, had worked with a roofer, and we have sealed the gutter and insulated the gutter, and we're seeing if that will stop any of the moisture damage we're having in the front of the building, as well as when we seal the block. Hopefully, we'll take care of that. The estimate and what they wanted to do on this roof is tear this roof completely off and redesign it where the water doesn't go into the integral gutter. It'd actually go into actual drains. It's above the roof and not in like it's showing there. You can see that. It's a better picture of that. So we haven't had a good rain to try it out. One of the problems that we was having is that gutter, when that cold rain would get it, or we have ice in it, it was condensating inside the building, which was causing us some issues. We'll talk about, this is the water that's migrating to the wall of the building, as you can see. We are working on the door and replacing the door. Jason's been working on the hardware, so some of the hardware is time and replacement because, like I said, it's twenty-some years old. But we wanted to show that to you. Along that west wall, when we had the big rain with the wind, that water was actually coming through that wall. You could actually see the droplets on the wall. And this is the inside of the building. You can see the effluorescence that's coming around. Like I said, we want to seal the outside wall first, work on that, and then we'll work on the inside after we get that wall sealed and know it's sealed correctly.
What would the downtime be?
Well, the outside will not, there won't be any downtime hardly at all. Though we'd work it from the outside, make sure we keep the building open at all times. Make sure that our means of regress is able to be used. There may be a time when we have to use one or the other, but we're going to try to keep them open at all times. And like I said, you can kind of see the issues. This is the issue we talked about several months ago with you. Like I said, we're watching it right now to make sure that we've got it taken care of, keep the moisture out of the building. You know, we're looking at, you know, what it would take to do the roof. This is the one that's about half a million dollars because what they propose is to remove that roof, remove all those penetrations, tear the ceiling out and redo everything, get the water where it doesn't go into that gutter. It goes directly to a gutter and goes outside. And you can see the wall, the wall damage, that's both from outside and the wall, water coming down the wall. And that's just some more of the ceiling and stuff.
Has it affected the gym floor?
No, it has not yet, but that's why we want to try to get the walls at least sealed and know that they're sealed, and then we'll work on the inside. There's another picture. And then this is our cost estimate that we had for the roof to remove it. Some of this did include sealing some of the block, but not all of the block.
I have old eyes. What does that say?
Huh?
I have old eyes. What does that say?
It talks about general conditions.
No, but I mean, how much would it cost to replace the roof? Is it on there?
Yeah, it's in there. It's five hundred and eighty-five thousand. Like I said, some of this included the wall ceiling. Like I said, hopefully, we got that stopped. So once we figure that out, then we'll figure out what we can do from there. We're going to look at all alternatives where it doesn't cost us that kind of money. So basically, it's six hundred thousand.
Where would the money come from?
We're looking at sales tax and see if we have enough in there. It may be that we may have to do a couple of the walls and not all of them, depending on what the cost would come back. But like I said, we're looking for the council's recommendations. If we go this way, if you'd like for us to, and we go ahead and go out for bids to see what we can do at least to save everything we can, and then we'd work on the inside as we go along.
You said if we go this way, what's, what are other options?
Let it be.
That's really, to save this building, to keep the moisture from wicking in, that's the only way I know of, is to seal the walls.
Was there a reason why it wasn't sealed to begin with?
Back in the, when this was constructed, the block didn't have a sealant in it to prevent that water migration. It probably, there's things that you can do that's not permanent. There is some sealant that you can put on there. It's a clear sealant. Thompson Water Seal is an example, but that's not the exact product, but it's a similar product. But when you do that, it has to be applied every three to four years, depending on the weather, and, you know, it's receiving. So it's a maintenance issue, and what we're proposing is not a maintenance issue. Fix those problems that we have and seal those walls where we don't have that moisture migrating in, and then once that's stopped, then we can do the other repairs as we go forward.
And this gym is used constantly.
Yes.
By so many different age brackets of our community.
Yeah, and we're looking at all of our structures, you know, trying to get the preventive maintenance up. You know, it takes money and, you know, at times we have not had the money we needed, but we have a little money now, and we're going to try to use that wisely, and that's why we're coming to you.
So would it have been cheaper every three or four years to seal these than it is what we're looking at now?
Probably not by the time, because you, you've got to continue to seal it.
Sure.
And the sealant depends on how it adheres to the building. You won't get a good coverage, so you still probably have some spots. We had Bill White that we work with a lot that works around the metro area. He's a construction consultant. He works through Team Design. He looked at this and he said the best recommendation he had is to seal the block with a block sealant and then paint it. And that way, you don't have any problems in the future, and you will have some maintenance, but not like you would with a water repellent, trying to get it on there. You know, if you try to use a water sealant on something that's porous, you know, it works, but after a while, it's not going to take it evenly. So you'll have splotches in there, so.
Is the, the grout in total need to be repointed?
No, just spots. They'd go in and rake out the bad spots and re-tuck point those bad spots or any loose spots as they'd go around and look at the whole building.
Do we have any health concerns for?
Not right now. We have not seen anything. That's why we want to get the building sealed. Like I said, the front part, we did, you know, we come to you and talk to you about it, but we were trying to seal that gutter or insulate that gutter so that we didn't have moisture issues, and like I said, we haven't had a good rain since then to see how it works. So hopefully, we got ninety percent of that, if not a hundred percent of that, taken care of for now. But the whole idea is to save the building and do what we can do going forward, and to replace it would be more expensive than doing the repairs.
So this is something you'd bring back and put on the agenda for us to vote on?
Yes. What we're looking for today is, you know, council's kind of nod that you want us to move forward, and this is what you feel is appropriate. Our recommendation is, this is the first step of several steps for this facility.
We have to save this gym for this part of town.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that gutter issue? Trying to think of how to ask my question because I'm not an expert in that. So I, I do know certain rifts and, and gutters are rated for certain gallons per minute or, or whatever. Is it possible that some of the wear and tear on that gutter is a result of cer- of certain acts of God that we don't anticipate? I mean, is it, is there any, is there any chance that insurance might come into play on?
No, insurance won't come into play because we've checked into that. We, we have checked into that, and insurance won't help us on that. Like I said, that's why we've tried to do some things to see if we can stop those issues so we can get some money gathered up so we can do what's needed in the future. And there may be some other options. Like I said, that was just one of the options, to remove the roof, do, you know, reframing, get it into a proper downspout and gutter system where it doesn't pond or collect on top of the roof in that gutter system is what we're trying to do.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Voice in your opinion on whether we should or should not look into it?
I don't think we have a choice.
Agreed.
Once again.
I think we have to move forward.
But that was a whole nother regimen, you know? It wasn't this group. Okay. Anyone else?
This for a point. We, we under our new management, our city manager, has us looking at all facilities, and we've been looking at him and try to come up with things or plans to address issues with these structure. And actually, we're trying to bring the most critical ones to you first because we can't bring everything to you because there's too much.
We've got to be proactive.
We're going to be bringing you pieces, and we're going to talk through our budget this next year. We're going to add those items for you to look at and decide, you know, what you want to fund. But our buildings are old, you know? This is one of the newer ones. It's twenty-two years old, but you start thinking about the other buildings, you know? They're thirty years old, or they're forty years old. You know, years past, we didn't have money to do maintenance. We're trying to look at that and do the things that we can to prevent any further damage to the structures. So that is something that the city manager has directed us as staff to look at and bring to you and try to address those issues because it is a big concern, but everything we have, you know, is old. And old takes a lot of maintenance, a lot of care. So we're trying to do that maintenance and care going forward.
And I appreciate that. I appreciate you being proactive and looking into those because we could just turn a blind eye and then the building is destroyed.
And in some of the other items we're bringing forward tonight, you know, we're trying to address those issues. Like I said, there's always so much money, but there's things that come into play too, but Joe Davis will be talking about something, and Arnold will be talking about some other things, but.
I know I'll get asked this question. What, what would the cost be to build a new gym?
On that location?
Yeah, in that area.
Yeah, because I mean, it needs to be in there.
With construction costs the way they are today, I would not guess, you know, we can look at those costs going forward, but I, I think they're going to be quite significant if you can even get the materials now because we're hearing, you know, steel construction, you know, getting the metal buildings is hard to get. You know, some materials are hard to get now. You know, it'd be very expensive, so.
If you could come up with a guesstimation, because I'm sure someone will ask and.
Well, we can look at it and come up with an estimate what it costs, but it'd be several million dollars to replace the structure, if not more. And like I said, this is just a couple of issues. You know, there'll be other issues that we'll need to talk about, the insulation in the gym, which we know about that. But we're trying to move forward and address those issues and try to do some preventive maintenance and address that.
Does, I'm trying to remember, does the, does Jackie Cooper have a air conditioning system in the gym?
It does. It was added several years ago. An air conditioning was added to it.
I thought I saw it on one of those pictures, but I was.
Heat and air and air conditioning, yes. It's a conditioned space now. Where it was, if you remember right, just outside air and heat. And it was pretty bad in the summertime, so that was addressed several years ago, five, six years ago or so.
All right, thank you. We need to move on. We've got two other issues, discussion of Wagner Road improvements.
Madam Mayor, Joe Davis is going to give the presentation on Wagner Road. We've had several requests to try and improve this road. It is heavy traffic, especially with the improvements they did on State Highway Four. We would really like to fix between State Highway Four and Yukon Parkway. At least do that first, but I'll let Joe give you some information on the road.
Good evening. We'll try to go through this kind of quickly. I think everybody's been out on Wagner Road after a rain, and really what we have, instead of barge ditches, we have detention ponds on either side because the drainage is so flat there. So the first picture you're going to see is very similar to what you see after a rain, maybe a week after a rain, with water still being held in the barge ditches and some still in the fields going to the north. The general project we're talking about picks up with the new construction on State Highway Four. That's in the yellow lines that you see. With the new State Highway Four, we're replacing the bridge over Turtle Creek, and then the roadway project is going to extend to the east a few hundred feet. So the project we're talking about picks up at the end of the O-line and extends it all the way to Yukon Parkway. The red lines that you see through there is actually the floodplain. This whole area is in the floodplain, and some of the problems we have out there is the road is actually in the floodplain. So heavy rains, we know what happens with the water, flat area, so we have very soft subgrades out there with the soft subgrades. We have a flexible pavement we've talked about in the past, and we have pavement failures. So we have quite a few areas. We've gone out and taken some pictures up to kind of get you an update, what we're seeing out there. First project, when we start looking back to the west at Yukon Parkway, it's a concrete section. Concrete section's been there for quite a few years, but it's still in fairly good condition. We're seeing some exposed aggregate where the paste is washed away over the years, but it's still performing very well. Very few concrete failures in this pavement. Typical pavement construction, we have transverse and longitudinal joints, and you can see we need to go ahead and do some rehab on those existing joints that are out there. And we do have some mid-panel cracks on traverse, traverse cracks. So again, you can see it's kind of typical through there. One of the locations at Trevor Drive, we went ahead and saw where the sidewalk has pushed out about a half inch and it's knocked over the, the curb and gutter section. And then if you've been out there, you know that, notice that there's an offset between the concrete section and the asphalt section. So the offset is because the asphalt section was put about the section line road. The middle of the asphalt section is about the section line road. So you have twelve foot on one side of the section line, twelve foot on the other section line. The concrete section, if you recall, the old standards were you build a subdivision, you build two twelve-foot concrete lanes starting at the section line going towards your development. So the concrete pavement you're seeing right here, the north edge is actually the section line road. So that's why we have a twelve-foot offset when the two meet up. So this is as we are starting to move further to the west. We're stopped at the first private driveway, and that darker area is that area where we earlier saw water ponding. We don't have cross drains in this area, and the water just sits there, feeds the subgrade, and that's again part of our problem. And in the front of the picture, you can see some of the failures that we're seeing, rather severe pavement failures there. The one thing you can also notice though is quite a bit of traffic that's actually on this road. Every time I've been out there, there's a lot of cars, and actually, we actually saw a brick truck doing a brick delivery further on down the road, but we do have a lot of truck traffic out here and a lot of car traffic out here. That's the outlet structure on the upper left-hand portion of the picture for River Mesa. So we first get to our first cross drain, and here we have three cross drains that go ahead and take care of the water flowing from the south to the north. CGMP pipes are at two of the locations. This one's a twenty-four-inch pipe that's been smashed on the end of it, but we still get most of the water through it. And the good thing to see about this, we have at least twelve inches of cover between the top of the pipe and the top of the pavement. So when we're looking at pavement sections, we know that we're not going to be getting into the drainage structure. Kind of go on to the drainage issues again. One of the thoughts were, can we go ahead and just raise it up another six to eight inches? And if we raise it up another six to eight inches, won't that make us have a better roadway surface? The problem is, like we saw, there's areas where the water doesn't drain. Where the water doesn't drain, it's just going to back that water up further to the people, the property owners that are on the south side of the road. So instead of doing that, we're proposing to go ahead and keep it the same elevation. So again, that's when it starts getting critical when we start looking at the cover between the existing drainage structures and the existing road out there. Another drainage structure, we're looking at the downhill side or the downstream side, and that's right before we get into Wagner Lake. This is the outlet structure at Wagner Lake, and right across from it's the cross drain that goes ahead and goes underneath the road and feeds to the barge ditch on the north side. On the north side too, at the fence line, we're seeing there's water, I mean, excuse me, soil that's been built up along the fence line from the cattle walking up and back and forth. So that's kind of formed a natural barrier on the private property owner too. We don't see any really well-defined streams. We don't see any way that the water's getting in. So again, the barge ditches are storing water on both the north side and the south side. We do have one RCP pipe, and it does have a broken end section on it. And we have gravel drives. Really, the private drives through here are gravel drives. One of the issues you see is the gravel gets kicked up on the asphalt road. And when we start looking and talking about concrete pavements, it's bad when we have gravel getting placed on a concrete road. It gets placed between those joints. We talked about the longitudinal transverse. Concrete heats up, and when it heats up, it expands. When it cold, it shrinks. So in the summertimes, you've seen concrete popouts where there are blowups on, on pavement sections, and a lot of times, it's when we've got some aggregate or some gravel that's gotten in those joints. When it expands, it has nowhere to go but blow up. So again, that's when we start looking at trying to minimize the amount of gravel that can be on the road from driveways. This is the sanitary sewer force main that crossed Wagner Road that was just done for this recent State Highway Four project. Now we're gotten to the end of the project, and we're looking towards Turtle Creek where the bridge is going to be. So we have a recommendation on the one page. If I've gone too fast, I'm trying to get through this quickly. We're recommending that, the first thing on the concrete section, the existing concrete section, it's in fairly good shape, so we recommend keeping that. For the panels that are broken, we're recommending replacing those panels, and then we're also recommending doing a joint seal on the existing joints that are there to go ahead and make sure we protect it from any gravel or anything that gets placed in there that could cause problems in the future. Where we talked about that offset of the twelve foot between the asphalt section and the concrete section, we're recommending a few hundred feet of a transition. So at Trevor Drive, we're recommending to take the curb and gutter off from Trevor going to the west and start that transition right at Trevor Road. And by making that transition, you won't have that quick jog. At that quick jog on the south side of the road, there is a brick mailbox. So that goes ahead and eliminates that brick mailbox from somebody trying to hit that in the future. And again, it'll be a smooth, gentle transition. Oh, I'm sorry. Went too fast there. The other thing we're looking at is recommending to do a twenty-four-foot wide, eight-inch-thick PC concrete section, a roadway section out there. So again, that picks up from the State Highway Four project and extends it to where we talked about doing that transition, tying into the existing concrete section towards Park, Parkway, or Parkway. Yukon Parkway, I'm sorry. The three purple sections right there are replacing the two CGMP pipes with RCP pipe, and then at the one pipe where we showed the broken end section, replacing that. So again, it's kind of the highlights, twenty-four-foot wide, eight-inch-thick concrete paving. Rehabilitate the existing concrete that's on the east end of the project. Maintain the existing grade. Do not elevate it because of the drainage issues we have. It's very sensitive in this area for drainage. We do that realignment correction at Trevor Drive. Improve all the driveways instead of the gravel driveways to concrete driveways. Concrete pipe, cross drains, so all the pipes instead of being CGMP will be concrete. And then the construction cost opinion's one point two million dollars. So with that, if you have any questions.
And where is that money coming from?
That money is coming from some reimbursements that we got from ODOT.
Okay.
That we are putting back into capital.
Good.
Hey, good sir. Good job. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for him? And we still have a few minutes, and I would like you to go ahead and address the striping. Can we continue on?
Okay, yes.
I'm trying to hurry, Joe, so we don't have to have to hand out and see you. No, I said you're just about as free. But I'm younger, Joe.
So basically, what we have here is just an overall map of the city, and what we have is a five-year cycle. The green in the middle is a project we did in two thousand nineteen, which is Cornwell, and we went from Cornwell basically to the railroad tracks on Vandemit. And then about a year ago, or less than a year ago, down on Northwest Tenth, we went from Cornwell over to about the water tower partnership with Charlie's Car Wash.
Didn't we go east also some? Didn't they redo that intersection?
No, they did not go into the intersection.
They didn't do any of that?
We did, went just to the intersection. So basically, we just broke this out in phase one. I'll try to hurry. These are current conditions right now, East Vandemit, and then the two pictures on Northwest Tenth. And I won't read all this. So we have projected, we have fifty thousand dollars in the capital budget for this year that we would like to complete these projects. We typically do these in the spring. We don't want to do it right now and have the snow plows just go out there and blade it all off, so we typically like to do that in the spring. There again, this is just phase two. West Vandemit and Yukon Parkway, that's the current conditions. We would like to complete these projects with funding available in two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Phase three is Garth Brooks. There's some of the current conditions that are out there right now. And there again, we'd like to complete these projects, twenty-three and twenty-four, again with a fifty thousand dollar fund. And there again, we'd like to do, complete these projects twenty-three and twenty-four, again with the fifty thousand dollar funding out of the Capital Improvement Fund. And here's phase four, which is kinda broke up, all the way from Health Center Parkway over to Lakeshore Drive and, and Holly. And as you can see, some of these roads are-
Yeah, for some of these roads not being done until twenty-four, twenty-five, that's scary, because it's dangerous as it is.
What we ran into some trouble is we've tried to have a five-year cycle, but over the past few, like, we haven't done any significant striping since two thousand nineteen because of funding issues, so.
Should we look at a four-year cycle or a three-year cycle, would that be better?
Yes, we could, if, if funding's available.
How much, uh, of our city manpower and equipment are we able to use, or is this all contracted?
This is all contract. So roughly what we get in every road is different, if you talk about Garth Brooks, where there's a lot more striping than, you know, Health Center Parkway or- So, but roughly, you can just estimate about twenty-five thousand dollars a mile. So we get, like when in two thousand nineteen, you can, you'll notice on there, we did a little bit over two miles, we went on Vandemit as far as we could go with the fifty thousand dollars. And this is the new striping that's on Eleventh Street north of Maine. Our overall goal would be for the whole city to look like that. The picture doesn't even do this justice, you go out there, the, it's new asphalt, new striping, that's what we would love the city to look like.
Where you can actually see the lines.
Right.
Right.
Absolutely.
Any other questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you. Do we need a break? Everybody okay staying? Okay.